Planning Commission meeting for December tenth, two thousand twenty-four. Ma'am Secretary, roll.
Members of the board, Ali.
Present.
Toth.
Here.
Schuman.
Here.
Abens.
Here.
Smolik.
Here.
Members of the administration, Assistant Law Director Morgan. Planning and Development Director Lieber.
Here.
City Engineer Evenson.
Here.
At this time, everyone please stand for a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Has all the commission members had a chance to review the minutes from our regular meeting on November twelfth, two thousand twenty-four? Is there any corrections at this time? Hearing none, those minutes shall stand. Director Lieber, is there some correspondence brought before the commission tonight?
Mr. Chair, there have been three administrative approvals of zoning certificates since your last meeting. A second location for Ridge Barber Shop, Paz Inspa Pet Salon, and Price Point Construction. All new to the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, ma'am Secretary, one announcement. If anybody's here for the Circle K, that has been pulled off the agenda. The applicant will be at our next month's meeting. So if you're here for that, there will be no discussion on that for tonight's meeting. Ma'am Secretary, please read the first application.
P P Z two thousand twenty-four dash zero three one eight, City Limits, three nine four six two, Center Ridge Road. P P N zero seven dash zero zero dash zero four six dash one zero one dash zero zero six. Owner, Stephen Joseph, three six eight two one, Sugar Ridge Road, North Ridgeville, Ohio, four four zero three nine. Proposal consists of rezoning property to B three highway commercial district. Property is owned I three heavy industrial district.
Okay. Director Lieber, findings of fact?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The applicant is both seeking rezoning of this property from I three heavy industrial to B three highway commercial, and they're additionally seeking approval to open a restaurant and lounge that makes site improvements in support of that use. However, tonight, the only matter before the commission is the referral from city council, which is the rezoning legislation. The development plan will be coming to the commission to you at a future meeting for review. So we're not going to be getting into the site plan tonight. Simply a recommendation on the rezoning. The property is about one point two five acres. It's located on the north side of Center Ridge, and it's the westernmost parcel of land in North Ridgeville. So it abuts the city of Aleria, and also abuts, because it's triangular in shape, railroad tracks, and also the Ohio Turnpike. So that's it, as you can see in the exhibit on the screen. The property contains an existing commercial structure. It was formerly occupied by a bar and lounge. That former bar has been vacant for many years. Currently, that rear portion of the building is occupied by a hair salon. Bars and restaurants are not permitted in the I three heavy industrial district. And while this bar operated in the past as illegal nonconforming use, the long time discontinuation had resulted in that loss of legal nonconforming status. So the building cannot be used again as a bar or restaurant without rezoning or without a use variance issuance by the D Z B A. And staff just felt rezoning was the right way to go with this particular property. I believe that rezoning of this property is recommended for a number of reasons. First and foremost, it's consistent with the city's future land use map and the city's recently adopted master plan. Second, the proposed rezoning would bring the property into greater conformance with the actual historical uses of the lot. Rezoning to B three would allow the property to be used for a bar and grill by right, along with other types of permitted uses, including retail consumer services and personal services, such as the hair salon. Third, the small size of the property, just being over an acre, does not really lend itself to heavy industrial development. And it's further bound by railroad tracks, the turnpike, and a road. So there's no opportunity to add additional property onto this lot to make it a more developable site for industrial development. And finally, there's really a mix of commercial and industrial use types in this area of Center Ridge. It would not be out of character with the existing development patterns. Across the street, there's a gas station, and in the nearer vicinity, there's a mix of commercial and light industrial uses. So for those reasons, I do recommend the rezoning of this property. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. I see we have a representative for the application. Please state your name and address for the record, and if you want to fill this in a little bit above and beyond what Director Lieber said.
Right. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. My name is Jeffrey Smith, one twenty-four Middle Avenue, Aleria, Ohio, Suite eight hundred, four four oh three five. The only thing I would add is it's also not, it's not right next to residential. I mean, I think this is, this is just going in line with what the building was for a long time. And then my client intends to go through the rest of the procedures as a B three to make sure that everything's in accordance with the rest of your zoning code. I think it seems like it just makes sense to me. I don't want to take up a lot of your time, as I think it's a pretty simple matter. Not that zoning's ever simple, but...
Okay. Is there any members of the audience that wish to comment on this project? Okay, hearing none, public session is over. Is there any questions or comments from the commission?
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
I just want to say, I drove by today, and I agree that this really makes sense, just to go ahead and rezone it. It looks like it'd probably make a great place for a bar nightclub kind of thing. It looks like it needs a facelift, and maybe you'll get one.
It will.
Good.
Okay. I agree a hundred percent. This is sort of a unique, challenging lot, so the fact that someone wants redevelopment, I think that's a good opportunity for the city. Is there any other questions or comments from the commission? Alright, hearing none, at this time, the chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
I'm gonna ask it that, that we vote on rezoning. P P Z two zero two four zero three one eight, City Limits.
Okay.
Let me ask for a second.
Okay. Is there a second for that recommendation?
I will second.
Okay, ma'am Secretary, please call roll.
Ali.
Yes.
Toth.
Yes.
Schuman.
Yes.
Abens.
Yes.
Smolik.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Ma'am Secretary, please read the second application brought for us tonight.
P P Z two zero two four dash zero three two zero, The Crossing at French Creek, five seven two five Avon-Beldon Road. P P N zero seven dash zero zero dash zero one nine dash zero 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 dash zero one zero. And zero seven dash zero zero dash zero two zero dash one zero one dash zero zero one and dash zero four two. Applicant, Tom Sutcliffe, Dries Homes, six eight six zero, West Snowville Road. Suite one oh five, Brexville, Ohio, four four one four one. Proposal consists of final plat for Phase One of The Crossing at French Creek subdivision. Property is owned R one Residence District, Chapter one, two eight two.
Okay. Director Lieber, findings of fact?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Crossing at French Creek subdivision is located on property zoned R one Residence District. And just as a reminder, was designed and constructed per the requirements of Chapter twelve eighty-two, which is our single-family detached and cluster development. The preliminary plat for the subdivision was approved by Planning Commission in October of two thousand twenty-three. Currently, the layout of the subdivision, the number of lots, the configuration of open space is the same as what was approved by the Planning Commission. As, and following Planning Commission's preliminary approval, the developer then proceeded with the submission of their improvement plans to engineering, and then began preliminary construction activities for Phase One. The subdivision of ninety-two units is being constructed in two phases. So at this point, you're being asked to finally approve Phase One, which consists of forty-one sublots. As I mentioned, the final plan is substantially similar to that, which was preliminary approved by the Planning Commission. Included in the improvement plant plans, the Planning Commission will probably note a little bit of a difference. Baldoff Crossing, which is the main entrance to the development, is shown with both northbound and southbound exit lanes onto State Route eighty-three. So that requirement was imposed by engineering in the course of their review of the project. So that was a little different than what you previously saw, but they managed to fit it in without altering the lot significantly. For final approval, Planning Commission has to review those items detailed in both the subdivision regulations and the zoning code, and in my review. I had noted in the, in the submittal from the applicant that it was missing a detailed landscape plan. They since submitted a landscape plan. It does provide for street trees and landscape treatment along Avon-Beldon Road frontage. However, the remaining open space areas are not well-defined. They're labeled open space. So I'd suggest, one, that the, you know, tree selections need to be made with the recommendations and approval of our city arborist. Second, that the future shade canopy tree planning area that was recommended by engineering as a result of some unapproved tree clearing be better enumerated in terms of the number of trees to be replanted in that area. And then, third, that those open space areas be better defined. The problem when we don't have a well-defined landscape plan is it leaves a lot up to the imagination of what goes in that area and how it should be maintained for the future. So we'd like, if it's going to be lawn, we like to know it's lawn. If it's wetland to be preserved, we like to know that, too. So if those items can be better delineated in the landscape plan, that would be really useful. The applicant did follow through and submit a lighting plan, and then they had submitted the H O A documents to the city back in July for review. So those have been submitted to the city. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I see Mr. Sutcliffe is here representing Dries Homes. Please state your name and address for the record.
Mr. Chair.
Of course.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, sit, uh, sit in here.
Mr. Chair, I just had a few things. The applicant for The Crossing at French Creek, as Ms. Lieber had noted, will like to move forward with the final plat approval and execution. However, as she noted, there are several outstanding improvements still to continue and required documentation, required documentation, including improvements for a stone sewer drainage system along State Route eighty-three that needs to be collected and conveyed to French Creek, both along State Route eighty-three and the north and south sides. There are some outstanding common sidewalk and walking paths, as Ms. Lieber had mentioned. There's the necessity of the approval of the landscaping plan and lighting plan. There's some storm and sanitary sewer videos that I believe still need to be approved. As built drawings need to be reviewed, and a final punch list by our field staff still needs to be addressed. The developers' agreement does allow for the execution of the plat as long as a performance bond and the amount of a hundred percent of the cost to perform all outstanding items is provided. And engineering takes no issue in proceeding in this manner. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other questions or comments from the rest of the administration?
No.
Okay. At this time, Dries Homes. Mr. Sutcliffe, state your name and address for the record.
Certainly, Tom Sutcliffe, Dries Homes, sixty-eight sixty, Snowville Drive. That's in Brexville, Ohio, four four one forty-one. I'm the land manager for Dries Home, Ohio.
Okay, tell us a little bit more about the project, above and beyond what Director Lieber did.
Of course. We brought the crossing to the city a year, over a year ago to segment and kind of dovetail with the development we're doing across the street with the Smithic family, which is North Ridge Point. We wanted to bring a more family-oriented and cost-effective home to the community. If you know, the North Ridge Point development has a higher demand for the, the façades, the, the hardscapes, the, they have, they have amenities on site, with swimming pool and tennis courts and this stuff, which, is everybody okay? Which kind of demands a higher price point. We tried to bring something to the community that would be actually more family-oriented. And we have two different house sizes going in here, where we don't have across the street. So we have a forty-eight foot home, which we don't offer across the street. They're all sixty foot wide, and we're offering a smaller, more value-oriented forty-foot product.
Okay, thank you.
Of course.
Is there any questions or comments from the general public? Okay.
Is it Phase One or Phase Two?
Do I have to address yourselves, or do the gentleman?
You could address that, yeah.
Of course, it's Phase One of two developments.
Because I live beyond Phase Two.
Alright, sir, if you have other questions or comments, you could come to the podium and state your...
You just ask the question.
Okay. Is there any other questions or comments from the general public? Alright, at this time, I will close the public question session. Is there any questions or comments from the commission?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
I have to admit, well, first, I'll ask the question. When you originally came for approval, I requested that you strongly consider a sidewalk connecting the, the neighborhood directly east, because that would bring your, bring those, any children there within a walking distance.
Phase Two, correct.
And I'm just wondering, is, is that sidewalk here? I have to admit, I can't quite see.
Certainly, the east, when you say the east, I think that's adjacent to Phase Two, correct?
Correct.
And we haven't submitted the engineering for Phase Two yet. So, but we will create connectivity between that existing residential homes.
It just, they show a whole plan here, so I'm looking at that.
Yeah. That's what we're submitting tonight?
Right.
Yeah.
I just wanted to make sure my request is there.
You're correct, sir.
Okay.
Is there any other questions or comments?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Hello, Mr. Sutcliffe.
Mr. Toth.
I was curious, I took a drive by there, and the entire western bank of French Creek there has been cleared of vegetation. I believe when you submitted for preliminary approval, that you had stated you were going to leave all of the trees along the French Creek.
Yes, we were planning on saving all the eligible trees that were able to be saved. And as already pointed out by the administration, they're all over me about that, which are correct. And we're agreeing to put trees back in place, which would be part of our final landscaping plan.
So I'm curious as to what that would look like. Are you going to be putting in just six-foot trees through there?
We're going to work with the arborists, as has already been suggested to us, to define what they would recommend going there, because I believe we'd like to keep deciduous trees, and that will be there year-round. And we're going to follow the direction of the arborists and the engineering department.
Okay, and engineering, you stated you were comfortable with that?
I am.
Thank you. Regarding open space calculation, it would appear that your open spaces include all of the landscaping along the frontage of Route eighty-three. You had about six acres down on the, would that be the southeast corner? You had a little bit of space up there in the northeast corner, excuse me, the southwest corner. You have the six acres, that block C. So essentially, your open space consists of the landscape mound across the front of the development, the stormwater ponds, you've got a sliver in the back southeast corner, is that correct?
Yeah, originally, when we submitted, we had shown a lot of open space intermixed amongst the homes to separate them further. The city had shown the inside to try to gather that all together into larger spots. So we did, and working with the administration and engineering, we did move it towards the front for the mounding. And we also want to include, not forget that we have the entire riparian area surrounding French Creek, going up and down north to south, that also is going to be remained as open space and open to the residents to use. The, the stormwater management plus the connectivity trails, you'll see that our plat here is a designated easement among the property. That's part of the open space for the enjoyment of people, as well as a large corner blockade in the northwest, or southwest corner, which was left as an open space. And connectivity also with providing a spot for future use by the city to eliminate stormwater management problems across the street. We allocated open space to the south to allow for that to happen in the future as well.
But there's really no common recreation area here that can be used by any of these residents at all?
If you mean amenities such as a playground or a swimming pool and such, no, this was not part of the plan of this community.
Nor is there any space to do anything like that.
No, there is not.
I think with your preliminary approval with that twelve eighty-two designation, the zoning designation, that was one of the, the requirements of obtaining that cluster zoning consideration. And from here, with this plan, you know, basically Chairman Smolik made the, the comment at that original meeting that it just appeared that you were sticking as many homes as you could into this area. And this plat plan here, the site plan, definitely demonstrates that to be true.
I'll default to, I don't believe that the zoning that we used here requires a structural activity area. It requires open space for common enjoyment, which is, at that time, we added all the walking trails to the project in order to create a, a sense of openness, so people can connect and walk amongst these things uninhibited. Originally, we didn't have all those open spaces and mounds, and we didn't have the connectivity in the sidewalk across the front, nor did we give deed to the city that easement to the south. And I do not know that a structure is required as part of a, it doesn't say recreation areas, it's an open space enjoyment. So I, maybe I'm missing something, but I think we've been called out on that much earlier in the engineering approval process.
Mr. Chair, I could answer that.
Go ahead.
There's no requirement for specific types of facilities in twelve eighty-two, like, like a pool or recreational structures. It just refers to open space, as Mr. Sutcliffe said. And I, I would also just caution that, you know, Planning Commission and council have already approved the preliminary plan. This is consistent with that preliminary plan. And just to consider the spirit of past approvals in your review tonight.
Okay, thank you. Also, for the, for the Assistant Law Director, the covenants for the H O A were submitted to the law department. Is law okay with everything there?
Yes, the, both, two documents were delivered quite a while ago. The H O A document draft with the city law director, which I have copied with me now, it's been submitted for the review, as well as the engineering and management of the stormwater centers that the H O A is required to maintain for the city's protection. That's been submitted to the both for review as well.
We require the submission of those, and they have been submitted to us. There's nothing in them that is out of the ordinary or that we would not expect to see in those kinds of documents, so they're fine.
Well, we're willing to make adjustments around your guys, you know. So feel free to offer.
We'll do that.
I know.
Thank you. Also, the notes on your utility plan state that any drainage tile found that discharges or passes through the site will be investigated, will be investigative if found draining, shall be incorporated into the storm sewer system.
There was a number of opportunities where we were able to exercise that clause, and some we did tie into ours, and some the city realized did not deal with our property, and they're dealing with as a third-party offsite. So yes, we've dealt with every single one responsibly, I believe, and reported to the city on those.
Mr. Chair, I could add to that as well. So one of the reasons we have outstanding drainage improvements yet to make is because there were, there was a field identified that wasn't originally identified in the existing survey that became apparent that we needed to address and collect and convey over to French Creek. And we have been working with the applicant to make that happen, so...
Okay. Well, thank you. Nothing else, thank you.
That's fine, thank you, sir.
Okay, is there any other questions or comments? Okay, I guess I need a point of clarification. Along Route eighty-three, that sidewalk and right away, we're all squared away with that? Or do we need, is there an easements we need, or...
Mr. Chair, I can answer that. So we did request the applicant to provide for additional right-of-way. So you could see now that, I believe, it's thirty-five feet from center line. So that provided additional right-of-way, not only for the drainage that we've already previously discussed, but as well as the, the sidewalk that's being provided in the, in the right-of-way. There, it does, it's more of a spline, it's not a straight line. It does maybe meander a foot or two beyond the right-of-way, but the ordinance does allow, if the parties are accepting, for the engineer to approve sidewalk just beyond the right-of-way.
If I can offer, we wanted to avoid the look of a, you know, burial mound across the front. So there's a little bit of serpentine look, which created the sidewalk to deviate from a straight path. And the city was great in working with us on allowing that to happen. It helped with the drainage, too, from the mound, so it didn't create a dam versus some serpentine release between them. So it was a joint venture which worked out pretty well.
Okay. Alright, any other further questions or comments? Okay. Hearing none, at this time, I would like to make a motion with the following conditions. Make a motion for recommendation of approval. The conditions are, the administrative staff will oversee the following. Tree selection by city arborist. Reconcile the excessive tree clearing on-site and cure that. Define the open space area more clearly. Complete the storm system along Route eighty-three. And provide the additional right-of-way along State Route eighty-three for the sidewalk. Is there any discussion? Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Alright. Ma'am Secretary, please call roll.
Ali.
Yes.
Toth.
Yes.
Schuman.
Yes.
Abens.
Yes.
Smolik.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Can I have a closing comment? This started a year and a half ago, and I got to tell you that it was an arduous process, but it was complete, and it was professional, and it was thorough. We, well, no, we didn't go by, that we didn't work with planning and/or engineering in a positive fashion, knowing that many times we were in the wrong in some of our execution, and they were fantastic in holding our feet to the fire. I say that in a positive way. And, you know, they, you, you should be thankful you have that team here. So they did a really good job of holding our feet to the fire. I can't be there all the time. And so, you know, they are, so just so you know.
Okay.
Thank you for your approval.
Thank you.
Ma'am Secretary, at this time, please read the third application for tonight.
P P Z two zero two four dash zero three two one, North Ridgeville City Schools, Transportation Center, seven zero zero one Ranger Way, P P N zero seven dash zero zero dash zero one six, dash one zero four dash two three three. Applicant, Claire Bank, Then Design Architecture, four two three zero River Street, Willoughby, Ohio, four four zero nine four. Proposal consists of constructing... A new...
I'm sorry, can we, yeah, if you guys, if you gentlemen want to continue the conversation, you can go out in the hall. Sorry.
Proposal consists of constructing a new transportation and maintenance center. Property is owned R one Residence District.
Director Lieber, findings of fact?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As stated, the proposal is a new transportation and maintenance center for North Ridgeville City Schools. It is in the R one Residence District, and it's surrounded primarily by additional R one Residence Zone property, with the exception of several commercial lots on Center Ridge Road, which are zoned B three highway commercial. The facility will be located in the field area north of the parking lot that is west of the stadium and across the street from Fire Station One on Ranger Way. Schools and other public uses are permitted uses in the R one District. The building is about eighteen hundred, eighteen thousand five hundred square feet, and it's pre-engineered metal building with metal roof panel. There's a wainscote of brick around the base of the building, and that will match the academic center nicely. The metal of the building will be a slate graying color. There's overhead doors provided on the north and south elevations of the building to allow access for buses and other vehicles and equipment that need required in routine maintenance. Site will be paved and striped for bus parking. Pavement will be asphalt with concrete curbing. There are spaces, I believe, for seventy-four buses, and there's additional standard parking spaces for employees adjacent to the building that will accommodate the maintenance staff. An additional row of parking is provided to the north of the existing lot. That will also provide parking for the bus drivers. A fueling station is proposed. The site is enclosed by a six-foot-high black vinyl coated chain link fence. They show a dumpster enclosure provided along the east of the building with screening for this maintenance center. Two new curb cuts are shown on Ranger Way, both single directions. So the northernmost curb cut will be enter-only, while the new southern curb cut will be exit-only. Connectivity to the existing parking lots provided through internal driveways. Notably, a traffic impact study was submitted by the schools for this project. That has been forwarded to the city's consultant for review. And so while discussion of traffic for this project is appropriate, there's still going to be some long-term discussions between the city and the schools about that traffic impact study and the recommendations. So this is not the last opportunity to talk about overall traffic between the transportation project and the high school project we'll be talking about after this. I had a number of comments that... I had a number of comments that were submitted to the applicant through our staff review process that they have responded to, and that they have provided some updates in their plan, in reference to a landscape plan, showing fencing detail, providing employee counts, making some slight adjustments to aisle widths, and to ensure proper spacing for the parking striping areas, they've provided lighting cut sheets, and we had discussed the fence height originally proposed at eight feet, which has been reduced to six, so that resolves that zoning issue. So, yep, they've met all of my requirements, I think there's still a discussion to have about the lighting calculation zone, so I'll listen for the applicant's presentation on that tonight, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Hello?
Mr. Chair.
Please, oh, city engineer?
Although Ms. Lieber did a very good job, was extensive, I just had a few comments. Engineering has made a preliminary review of the improvement plans, existing utilities are available on or near the site, stormwater management and water quality are being provided specifically just for the transportation center. Engineering will require some additional analysis of the drainage system, especially as it relates to the floodplain elevation of the Robinson Ditch to the north of the site, but we've already had discussions, and we can work that out during final review. Adequate fire hydrant coverage has already been discussed to ensure that they get approval through the Fire Department. As Ms. Lieber had mentioned, parking lot improvements, including ADA requirements, shall be in accordance with the new parking chapter, 1285. And as Ms. Lieber also had mentioned, we'll be looking at the lighting, lighting plan as well during final review. Upon, I just wanted to note, upon planning approval, the applicant shall make application for engineering plan review through the Building Department to seek final approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other questions or comments from the administration?
Just briefly, I would like to say to the applicant in their presentation, if you would hit the traffic issues, drainage issues, and lighting issues, as how they will impact the surrounding areas, because this is a residential area, and people are very interested in how that's going to impact them. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I see we have some representatives for this application, please state your name and address for the record, and then to listen a little bit more about the project.
Okay, I'm Claire Bank, address 4230 River Street in Willoughby, I'm acting as the architect on this project, and then I don't know if you want to fill it as well.
Bill Sherman, with Hammond Construction, we are the builder, the construction manager, 1550 Corporate Woods Way, Union Town, Ohio, 44685.
Yeah, so it was really, I think, a great summary already as to the scope of the project. This particular piece of the high school site and of the North Ridgeville campus is the transportation and maintenance center. It's replacing two buildings that are on-site, as well as parking that is on-site already, just to the east of the existing high school. So, part of the purpose of this project, A, is to replace very old facilities that need replaced to maintain the buses and the school district moving forward, but also to create room for the new high school, which will be on the front of the campus. As far as some of the outstanding issues, traffic, drainage, lighting, the traffic study is, as mentioned, in review with the consultant that the city has hired. As far as recommendations, they mostly had to do with just traffic that is on campus and backs up onto campus, but further discussion of that will occur, I know, between our traffic engineers, the two different teams, and then we'll have more information as far as bringing that forward. There weren't really any recommendations as far as the transportation center piece to it. It was part of the study, but there weren't any outcomes that were different than how it's functioning now. As far as the drainage on-site, we actually have a meeting scheduled with the city tomorrow to look more in-depth at some of the calculations that are being put together, but as mentioned, the drainage for this site is all being handled in this area. You can see, to sort of the left of the page, there is a basin that is gathering the runoff from the parking lot and from the building. And then for lighting, as mentioned, there were, there were some explanations that needed to occur here, basically because of competing priorities, we're trying to avoid putting any lighting poles in the middle of the site because of the bus traffic and not wanting that to be damaged with time. So, we are lighting that parking lot from the perimeter of the site. Most of it is, I think, within city limits as far as how the ranges are, to speak, putting on my electrical engineer hat a little bit. The one that was a little bit brighter than, I think, potentially what the city would normally recommend is the one that's to the north, because it's casting south sort of through the center of that lot towards the maintenance and transportation facility. We can get more detailed calculations to the city engineers if they would like to review that in more detail, but my understanding from the electrical engineers, the ranges weren't too out of line with what the city expected to see. So, the lighting fixtures match what's on the campus at the three-through-eight facility, so, pretty good control as far as keeping it on-site, they're LED fixtures, so we can provide more information as needed.
All right, is there any, anyone from the audience who has some questions or comments in regards to this project? All right, hearing none, public comment session is closed. Is there any questions or comments from the commission?
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Real simple, so right now, buses go east and west coming out onto Bainbridge, do they go north on Ranger Way also? Are they already running north?
Yes.
Okay, so this isn't really going to change, this will be the exact same?
A lot of, as far as bus traffic in and out on Ranger Way, I mean, they'll have to get to in front of the North Ridgeville Academic Center to pick up and drop off those students, but it's not going to change any of the bus routes as far as where the buses are being stored during the day.
And it really isn't going to change traffic out up on Center Ridge, or south on Bainbridge either?
No.
Okay, thank you.
All right, is there any other questions or comments?
Mr. Chair, a couple of questions pertaining to the drive that's to the direct east of the project. Okay, is that emptying out into another drive? And where does, if it is, where does that exit on to? I couldn't see from any of my drawings.
The buses leaving the bus lot are...
Just the driveway, the driveway that is right adjacent to the stadium.
I think Bill knows what you're talking about.
That is strictly a maintenance driveway used by...
Is that what, okay.
Yeah, so...
I was wondering about that.
Yep, and it accesses the...
Oh, I see, sorry, I was looking west.
To the east, accesses the athletic fields, and that's used for maintenance purpose.
That's, because the driveway is wide enough for a bus, but not the maintenance path. And then the other, just a comment, again, coming from the industry that I came from, within your building itself, what you may want to consider in order to save time, maybe a few dollars, but not much, but in order to save time, you may want to look at modular implant offices, that way you could possibly save as much as two months opening time by doing that, because those offices and bathrooms and restrooms, shower rooms, whatever, can be built at the same time as your pre-engineered building is. And just so you know, I've used them successfully down at the steel mill in Cleveland, and some of them have been there for 35 years, so longevity's not an issue.
Something we can look in, into.
And no, I'm not selling them anymore.
Is there any other questions or comments in regards to this?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Yes, I was curious about the fencing that is going to surround the parking there on the south side. Now, from what I'm seeing on the drawing, and I went up there and I looked at the site, it appears that you're going to take the back row of that parking, or the northernmost row of that parking, and then you're going to add like an opposing, and you're going to fence all of that in. So that would be essentially quarantined off from all the other lots, that area.
No, to clarify, the back row of parking is mirrored, but then the fence is actually just to the north of that, so we're only fencing in the transportation and maintenance center and the buses.
So, that red line that I'm seeing there running right up?
That was me just trying to say that, that parking is meant to serve those staff, but it's not being fenced in.
Okay, okay. And that back driveway is, Councilman Abens has brought up that the southeast, that's going to be essentially for maintenance?
Correct.
And how would you be bringing fuel into the, your fueling station? That, I'm taking that's it, back there on the east side, right?
Yeah, it's the black, black bar, basically, is where the fueling station will be.
Okay, so you'll just be circling your fuel truck through there, and then coming right back out?
Yeah.
Okay, and one thing about the traffic study I was curious about was, it mentions vehicles, however, I'm not certain it really takes into account the dispersment of the buses in, for their routes, and then the collection of them coming back in, because that, that is an event that happens essentially like clockwork, so it's not like it's predicated on any type of additional building, if you build, no build, all those different variables that you had in that study, but there is preliminarily the dispersment of the buses, and then there's a certain time where they are collected, and I'm hoping that that is going to be accounted for in that study.
Yeah, I know, as far as the location of the buses, our traffic engineer was aware of where they were going to be located and of that flow with the school district, I can double-check and just make sure that that was accounted for in that study.
Thank you very much.
I guess to piggyback off of that comment, you know, the fire station exit's right there, so we just want to make sure that emergency services aren't impacted when, you know, I don't know how many buses depart at one time, so I think maybe if the study dives into that a little bit, that'll be greatly appreciated. Obviously, this is a campus setting that's being created by the school. The materials that are used, I know there was just a small picture of the brick, is it going to match what's over at Enrak, like color-wise?
Yes.
And then that sort of matches the fire station and police station?
They're all similar, yeah.
Right, okay, so you guys are trying to keep similar building materials?
Yeah.
And then, so you have the brick band around the building, and it's pre-engineered, and then is that going to be like a white, or?
More of a gray, like, that is on Enrak, sort of a tannish gray.
Okay.
It's called a slate gray.
So, that color palette at Enrak is going to be used, okay.
Yeah, trying to keep that campus feel, since they're so close to each other.
All right, good, okay. That's all I had.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
More questions pertaining to the overhead doors? What size are they? I have to admit, I can't read the print there.
I think they're 12-foot by 12-foot.
Okay, again, an industrial, an old industrial salesman, I would suggest one of the doors be at least 14 by 14, only because of future. I remember going through quite a few industrial buildings that posed some restrictions because of their overhead doors. Having one for future unknowns is always a good idea. The other question I would have too is, this is also a repair facility, correct? The building?
Yes.
So you are going to be dealing with oils, fluids, things of that nature, is there an oil separator within the structure? Okay.
Okay, any other further questions or comments from the commission? All right, at this time, the chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
I'm going to move to recommend P P Z 2024-0321, North Ridgeville City Schools Transportation Center, and ask for a second.
Okay, discussion? I would like to add a condition on that, that the administration will review the final photometric lighting plan for the parking lot. Is there any discussion on that?
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
I'd also recommend you add approval of tree selection.
Okay.
Also, traffic study.
Okay, so, just to recap, we will add, the administration will review the photometric plan for the lighting of the parking lot, and then the trees will be selected by the city arborist, and that the administration will review the final traffic plan, study when it's completed.
So moved.
That is the motion, all right, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, at this time, Madam Secretary, please call roll.
Ali?
Yes.
Toth?
Yes.
Schuman?
Yes.
Abens?
Yes.
Smolik?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, Madam Secretary, please read the application number four.
P P Z 2024-0322, North Ridgeville City Schools High School, 34600 Bainbridge Road, P P N 07-00-016-104-233, applicant Claire Bank, then design/architecture, 4230 River Street, Willoughby, Ohio, 44094. Proposal consists of Phase One development, early site work for the new high school, property is zoned R1 Residence District.
Okay, thank you. Director Lieber, findings of fact for Phase One development.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The proposal consists of a new high school complex with parking lots, athletic fields, and other accessory site improvements, the entire property is zoned R1 Residence District, and schools are permitted uses in the R1 District. So, North Ridgeville City Schools are seeking phased approval for this project, it is maybe usual for a project that might take years to consider this in a phased process. So, Phase One will consist of early site work, preparing the site for construction of the building, Phase Two will be the actual building construction, and then the third and final phase will be the demolition of the existing high school, and then the final site work. Phase One construction is scheduled to begin in summer of 2025, building construction is intended to begin in spring of 2026, the old high school will be demolished and final site work commenced in summer 2028, and the new high school would be open for the 2028-29 school year. In Phase One, Planning Commission would review the overall site plan for the new high school and campus improvements, the plans generally show facilities to be demolished, the proposed layout of new buildings, parking areas, athletic facilities, and stormwater management facilities. The new high school is shown located south of the existing building, so that current high school can remain in use until such time as the new high school can come online. Due to the loss of parking in the construction zone for the high school, Phase One also includes approval for additional parking areas. Two of those parking areas are going to be in the green space area closest to Enrak on Ranger Way, another parking lot will be constructed in the location of the existing transportation building that would be taken down with the construction of that previous project we discussed. Project, the high school piece, abuts residential properties along Pitts Boulevard. Today, those properties have a combination of parking lots for buses and vehicle parking, tennis courts, and open space, so really, that area north of the entrance drive from Pitts, the only change along that boundary will be the re-striping of the existing parking lot. South of the entry from Pitts, those properties that abut is where the greater change will occur. In that area, parking and driveways will be expanded, and the new building will be located in this kind of southeast quadrant of the site, it's about a little over 90 feet away at its closest point. Pavement will be set back 10 feet from the property lines, and there will be some fencing and buffering provided along this boundary that will be refined as we get closer towards probably that final, final site work proposal in Phase Three. We've already discussed that the traffic impact study was submitted, and that our traffic engineering consultant is in review. I would recommend any approval in Phase One, be contingent upon recommendations that come out of the review of the traffic impact study, and to also, a condition of approval that buffer strip be provided for the residents abutting along that east property line. That concludes my report, thank you.
Okay, city engineer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Engineering has made a preliminary review...
Engineering has made a preliminary review of the phase one plans, including the demolition and earthwork. Uh, our main concern is to ensure that SWIP measures will be implemented prior to any mass earthwork operations. Uh, and we will do that during a final review of the grading plans. Uh, as Ms. Lieber had mentioned, as the school moves forward with the design endeavors, engineering does have some concerns um, to ensure that the overall design and global impacts of the campus, including stormwater management, uh, existing utility capacities and traffic impacts are discussed at length and approved through the administration during early, during the early phases. Again, I would note that uh, upon approval, upon planning approval, the applicant should make application for the engineering plan review through the building department. Thank you.
Okay. Assistant law director? Okay. Welcome again. Unfortunately, I have to state your name and address again for the record.
That's okay. I'm Claire Bank with End Design Architecture. Our address is four two three O River Street in Willoughby, Ohio.
Bill Sherman with Hammond Construction, fifteen fifty Corporate Woods Parkway, Union Town, Ohio, four four six eight five.
I think similar to the last project, a lot was already said as far as the overall intent of being in front of you today. As mentioned, the construction timeline is long and we're still doing quite a bit of design work as far as detailing out the interior and getting all the engineering systems working together, baking in those details. So this allows construction to start while the design finishes, which just helps the overall timeline in getting this school open for the community. I think a lot of what we said for the last one still applies. The traffic is being studied and will come back. Well, we will continue those discussions with the city. And as far as the overall site design, I think that just one, I guess, point of clarification, not even really clarification, but the entries and exits from the campus are remaining the same, in the same locations as they are currently. Um, which is one thing that just I think wasn't highlighted before. And then I think I misspoke on when the stormwater meeting was. I think it's Thursday, not tomorrow, so shouldn't call me out on it. But those discussions are ongoing as we look at the overall campus.
Okay. Is there any questions or comments from the general public on this project? Go ahead, state your name and address for the record.
Richard Chap.
Sorry.
Richard Chap, six eight six four Pitts Boulevard. Um, I just wanna make sure that the water management is, uh, taken care of because, uh, we've experienced since the tennis courts were put up, um, we've gotten water in our backyards, flooding that we didn't have before. So if we get more water, I I don't know what I'm gonna do at this point. It's my yard is always filled with water now at this point, so. That and then, um, lighting, I I don't know what kind of lighting is gonna be used, but I don't know if that's gonna be bright now in our backyards, so those are my concerns.
Um, one clarification on that, do you live right behind the tennis courts now?
Yes.
Okay, just so we have an idea where you're at, okay. If you guys wanna chime in on those?
Yeah, for for the lighting, per both the city's requirements and for lead, which is a sustainability. I guess, design standard that we have to hold to, we have to control light really closely within this, within the site and not spill out to other locations. So lighting should not be impacting here, here, um, residents. As far as the stormwater piece, again, we're we're going through those discussions now, but our goal is always to, not goal, I think our requirement is to treat all the, treat all the water on site and not have it running off and impacting neighbors. So that's overall, we're looking at the campus and and that design, I guess, solution that is going to do that in the best way that we can.
Okay. Is there any other, is there any other questions or comments from the general public? Alright, hearing none, uh, public comment session is over. Is there any questions or comments from the commission?
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Couple things. Are there gonna be curbs on these parking lots that you're gonna be building?
Yes, that that's currently the plan.
Okay, so that's gonna be for water capture, right? As far as during the construction process, are you gonna be doing a, uh, some kind of temporary stormwater management?
Yes, we will, and that's, as the city engineer has already referred, we will have a SWIP plan which will include that temporary stormwater management.
And you'll do that before the parking lots start going in?
Before any earthwork.
Okay. What about a truck wash station? That Bainbridge is gonna get real muddy.
Yeah, we 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 actually utilize a couple things. Um, we have tried and and will still consider the use of a truck wash. Um, we've also, uh, there's new technology on roll-off mats, large, heavy industrial roll-off mats that we have seen, have had good success with on past projects. And they basically just, they act as huge rumble strips on the construction site themselves, shaking off all the tire debris. And then we'll have street cleaning in place. So we will run a commercial street cleaner, a a third-party independent commercial street cleaner. Won't be our, won't be what you often see, construction tractors rolling up and down the street. These will actually be a a street cleaning, uh, business, but that we will employ.
Um, as far as the, I'm sorry, I don't have your name written down, um, the architect.
Yeah. Sorry, Claire.
What is your name again? I'm sorry.
Claire.
Claire, okay. So a- as far as the, where the property, uh, the where the new parking lots uh, and driveway bump up against the residential neighborhoods there. Uh, what are we doing there? Are we putting a new fence up along that? Is that what you show on the, on your plan here?
Yeah, on the plan we submitted, we were showing a privacy fence along that border. They're looking at that in more detail and this is where we've been talking with the city some as well. It's a mixture of mature vegetation, there's some fencing in place. We wanna make sure we're not, I guess, treating it in a way that's not appropriate for some of the residents based on what they already have there. But definitely doing a buffer, it's a mixture of fencing and landscaping that we're working on.
Okay, do we have that on the plan in front of us here?
The fencing is on the plan. I think the landscaping, we submitted a narrative that talked about a mixture of trees and then some other vegetation types. It was kind of a big red block of text on a landscape plan.
Okay, well, it would, I think it'd be appropriate for for us to allow the administration to review, do final review of that?
Um, to Mr. Schuman's question, I think those details you'll have before before you in phase three.
Okay.
So, you know, installing the fencing or landscaping at the start when all this earth moving is still happening doesn't make too much sense, unfortunately. And that will give us some time to explore the right placement of landscape versus fencing and maybe have some neighbor conversations where existing fencing exists to see.
Right.
Cause we don't wanna create little spaces between back-to-back fences that don't get maintained. So there's a lot of consideration to try and have something that makes sense and that works for those most impacted residents as well.
Always a very sensitive subject.
Yes.
Buffering.
Yes. And we just, we don't do those before construction activities, partially for SWIP as well as far as making sure that we're controlling construction activities on site.
But I mean, you're gonna be putting in these parking lots and if we don't have a buffer, an area for a buffer on those parking lots now, then we won't get one.
We'd only be putting in, so the the one just south of the tennis court is already existing and it's new, so that's just getting restripped.
Okay.
And then the one that is just north of the new high school, there's only a small portion of that that's getting put in. The rest is gonna be taken up with construction activities.
The the final configuration of that parking lot that Claire just referred to will be part of phase two.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
So it's really just the two.
I understand. You're looking to put the ones in to take pressure off so you can destroy the parking lot in the front there. Okay, I gotcha. Okay, I'm I'm good. Thank you.
Is there any other questions or comments?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
I would just like for the engineering to possibly investigate the water issues along the tennis courts to see if we could alleviate their problems at this point and see what the problem actually is. Could be nothing more than a clogged sewer in that area, who knows?
As with that development, we tried to, um, you know, review any, not only residents, but, uh, you know, other neighboring community, uh, neighbors to ensure that, uh, stormwater is addressed at the property line.
Right.
We'll do that. Thank you.
Is there any other questions or comments? Okay, um. I guess there's that house in the lower right. Has the school board ever thought about purchasing that home? It seems like the development is sort of going around it.
Uh, Roxanne Castario, three four
Six two zero.
Six two zero Bainbridge Road. I don't often have to use that address. Um, North Ridgeville, Ohio, four four oh three nine. Uh, we have not explored purchasing the home. However, I have reached out to the owner by way of mail at this point. Um, I have some, I guess, very high-level information about the gentleman who owns the property. I have not heard back, but it actually is an item on my calendar to follow up with him. Uh, but at this point, it is not required as part of the project or necessary to build what we have in place. However, his, most of his property will become a pretty active construction site, which we wanna be respectful of. So it was important that we do reach out to him.
Okay, thank you. I guess as far as the location of the school, was it possible to shift this a little bit to the northwest to try and, you know, get a little bit more clearance from that house? I mean, we have to, I mean, I get it, but we have to sort of respect our neighbors as well.
Yeah, the the challenge with shifting it to the northwest was staying far enough away from the high school to maintain emergency access and drop-off loops around that during both projects, um, during construction. So we got it as far as we could and we kept trying to shift as far as we could away, but that's, that's as far as we could get away.
Okay. Um, my next question is, we have that road that goes to Pitts and you have that, you know, that dog leg, if you will. I'm assuming you wanna sort of keep that for two reasons, traffic calming and then second, to try and keep as much grass area there as opposed to getting rid of that because it's, you know, it sort of seems awkward. You're redoing the whole entire site, yet you wanna leave that sort of weird driving configuration.
Yeah, that partially had to do with making, we did wanna keep some lands- landscape buffer there primarily because it's a bunch of student drivers, so we wanted to make sure that there weren't sort of confusion as far as exiting that lot and having a lot of people all on that one drive at once. So still maintaining the exit points that we do instead of having more exit points onto one drive aisle.
Okay, and then going with that neighborly approach. Um, I realize some of those people on Pitts used to have the bus garage behind them. I mean, was there any thought of moving the retention basin on the, on the house side? Because right now you have, you have that road, retention basin, parking lot. So the park, uh, it seems to me the parking lot and the retention basin could shift just to give them, you know, a little bit of more buffer away from some of that parking lot.
I, that's one I would have to raise with our civil engineer, as far as if they looked at swapping those two. I under, I absolutely understand this suggestion as far as a more natural buffer between those two.
Right, and yeah, just trying to be, like I said, neighborly the best we can. And then, I guess, as far as the total buildout, the plan is right now, we're going to have the high school drop-off come off of Pitts?
The plan right now is still in review with the the engineers, but there are a number of drop-off loops. One can come in off of that central drive as far as the area in front of Enrec. And then some would be able to come in off of Pitts as well. There's also the drive that is the drive that currently connects with the student lot that would still be a connection point as well.
Right. So you're going, I mean, I guess, is Pitts gonna get additional traffic, a total build-out? Or are you guys, like, obviously now, you know, there's access into this campus from there now. Uh, that total build-out is there going to, by rearranging all these, the, you know, the circulation loop, is there gonna be additional traffic that's in that residential area?
I think there's potential for there to be, but there's also potential to use those other entry points. So that's what I would say is still somewhat in discussion.
Okay, so circulation's still in discussion, okay.
But that is one of the points that could be an access point to a drop-off loop.
Um, as far as, obviously, we're putting in these temporary parking lots. Um, we're extending what I call the Enrec guest parking to the south. We're, we're doing a parking lot infill for that one semi-athletic field. Though, are those temporary or a total build-out they're going to stay?
They'll stay at total.
Okay, so, alright. And so my rough count counts were, obviously, the main paved high school parking lot's going to be taken out of commission to facilitate the construction. Um, and then the existing faculty parking lot's being restripped. I'm, I'm, when I do my, you know, the the traffic stall count, I'm like short. Is the, is the plan, once you remove those, those parking spots, it's going, you're gonna try and balance? You're gonna provide as many that we're taking out as a different location on site?
We're providing as many as we can on site during construction. Overall, there will be more parking over the completed campus than there is existing. But during construction, it's gonna be, it's gonna be tight. And the priority is gonna be staff parking. The cutting, I guess, of parking available would be student parking potentially. But I know the school district is also talking through solutions for that as far as what would be appropriate.
Okay, so they might, so the school might change their policy on who gets to use parking lot and, okay. I don't know if the school wants to chime in on the shortage of parking during this construction phase?
Sure. I'm David Curtis, superintendent with the district, thirty four six twenty Bainbridge Road. So that is one of the things we have discussed is not only the limiting of parking, but specifically where students can park. We've also discussed other options, um, including off-campus parking and then busing students from central lots to campus if need be. So, um, as of this moment, everything is, um, under consideration as far as that go. We recognize that this first, through this construction process, we're going to have that as our primary challenge. So those discussions have already begun.
Okay.
I can, real briefly, that, and the pinch point is not the entire two years of of building construction, candidly. So when we have the two new lots on online, um, on the western side of the site, um, the shortfall is not as dramatic as it would appear. It's primarily student lot parking, but I think we can make up a lot of those. There'll be a pinch point, I would tell you, um, fall semester of twenty twenty five. But after that, it'll start to relieve itself when we bring parking lots online.
Okay. And then as far as total build-out, um, I'm assuming total build-out will have more spaces than there is now for the high school because we're anticipating, you know, growth for the district.
Yes, yeah, there will be more spaces total. And I know with with zoning, we're providing enough in the different ways that it would be calculated. And with the student and staff counts that the school district has supplied to us.
Okay, maybe, um, you know, for the next phase, we could have an executive summary of total, parking's always an issue for these. And I've been around a, I just high school build, so believe me, I know. Alright, does anybody else have any other questions or comments?
Mr. Chair, uh, first of all, my experience comes from, uh, growing up across the street from a high school. Uh, I would highly encourage keeping the dog leg. Uh, and also, as far as parking is concerned, my experience has been students become very creative finding parking. And, uh, so, uh, that's, I have to admit, that's not a major issue. And, uh, they may be approaching some of the surrounding residents to, uh, rent out space and things like that. And I also had sons who attended a high school with very limited parking. And again, they got creative as far as their parking options are concerned. So, uh, we need to give our students a little more credit.
Okay, is there any other further questions or comments? Um, alright.
Sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Richard Chap, six eight six four Pitts Boulevard. Was there a study done on the actual drop-offs within the school? Because we have kids that go to school and it seems like there's a lot of Because we have kids that go to school, and it seems like there's a lot of stopping. Uh, people don't know where to go, and it ties up traffic, and, um, I was just wondering if there was actual study within the campus to figure out how traffic flow should go through to make sure that things are emptying out on the streets and getting on to where they need to go.
As part of the traffic study that we did, we looked at a number of different ways of flowing through and where it maybe could place cones to try to keep people from, from being confused. I know that's been an ongoing effort of the school district over the years as well. So, yes, I'd say it was part of the study, and it is an ongoing discussion.
Okay. All right, is there any other further questions or comments? Okay. I just want to remind the planning commission that this is phase one. Um, this is, does not constitute a full development plan. Obviously, this is just to get some stuff started for the early part of the construction for this. So, some of these moving parts may be refined further on, so we will get, you know, a couple more opportunities to take a look at this to make sure that it fits our community as we see fit. At this time, the chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Okay, so, um, I, I'd like to, uh, uh, move to, uh, recommend. This is PPZ-two zero-two-four zero-three-two-two. This is North Ridgeville City School, High School. And, uh, the only condition, uh, that I see is the, uh, that they take the traffic, uh, study recommendations.
Okay.
Anything else?
Um, discussion? Yeah, I think, um, administratively, they need to review the buffer strip along the east property line. And then possibly look at, um, swapping the retention basin for that parking lot, just to try and get additional buffering.
All right, I'm good with that.
Okay, is there any further discussion? All right, um, at, at this time, um, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Ma'am Secretary, please call roll.
Ali.
Yes.
Toth.
Yes.
Schuman.
Yes.
Abens.
Yes.
Smolik.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
You had a lot of slides ready.
Here we go.
All right. Uh, I guess Director Lever, uh, for the fifth thing on our agenda tonight, the zoning code diagnosis. Um, I guess the city hired a consultant to dive deep into our zoning code, and they made some early recommendations.
They did. They dove deep, and they finally came up, uh, and gave a presentation to council and all of you on December second. So, thank you for those who could attend. Uh, I'm not going to repeat the presentation. The document was provided. We had, um, a couple of comments during the meeting that resulted in a couple of little fine-tuning, but generally, the recommendations are as presented. I'm looking for the commission just to give their blessing to move ahead, um, in accordance with the diagnosis. And the, the next steps would be to engage the consultant, to have them provide, uh, phase-two proposal to begin the, the drafting. And then there will be, as you can imagine, many more opportunities for the commission to review the actual language, but it'll be consistent with the diagnosis as presented. I'm happy to answer any questions if you have specific.
Um, I assume the, their initial diagnosis, is this online for the general public to look at?
It is not yet. Once you, um, take action, we'll make sure we post it.
Okay, after, if we recommend that, if your council approves it, okay.
Yes.
Okay, perfect. All right, is there any other questions or comments? All right. I guess at this time, the chair is entertaining a motion for the planning and zoning code diagnosis.
Mr. Chairman.
Mm-hmm.
So, are we voting to accept this? Is that how you want it?
Yes, it's not an adoption. It's a recommending document, so I suppose either accept or recommend is, other wording is just fine.
How about if, um, if I move to accept and recommend?
That is twice as good, Mr. Schuman.
Thank you.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, ma'am Secretary, please call roll.
Ali.
Yes.
Toth.
Yes.
Schuman.
Yes.
Abens.
Yes.
Smolik.
Yes.
It is unanimous.
Okay. For the last thing on the agenda tonight is the active transportation plan. Uh, Director Lever, tell us a little bit about this.
Thank you. Uh, for the, I think, better part of, uh, twenty-twenty-four, a committee was convened to create an active transportation plan for the city, along with the safe routes to school plan. The focus was to provide better connectivity and opportunities for non-motorized means of travel. Uh, this was a result of a grant the city applied for through NOACA, I believe in twenty-twenty. And the award was made in twenty-twenty-one, and the study began in twenty-twenty-four. Interestingly, while there was such a delay, it dovetailed nicely with the end of our master plan process. So, it was really nice to have the foundation of our master plan while underway, and then use that as a basis for the active transportation plan. But we had broad representation, um, from, uh, the city, different departments, uh, the schools, and the general community that, um, looked across the city at the opportunities for, uh, linkages, uh, trails, uh, sidewalks, and looked at how to connect our assets, looked at where people traveled to and from. Really, this project was, uh, under the review of NOACA. And they, we worked with NOACA for the consultant selection process, and then NOACA, we had to follow their format and rules, and NOACA has reviewed and accepted the document as of today. So, I'm also provided the link to, uh, the planning commission with the hopes that you would also, um, recommend and accept the active transportation plan, so that it can be an official document of the city and that it can be used as the basis for future requests for funding from ODOT, from NOACA, and from other funders that might have, uh, financial opportunities for us to pursue in our quest to make our community better connected and safer for pedestrians and bicyclists.
Okay, sounds good. Is there any questions or comments?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Comment. Uh, every week, I'm getting more and more requests and questions as to why North Ridgeville hasn't started a sidewalk program. So, it is the, the, the want and need is out there.
Okay, is there any other questions or comments? All right, at this time, the chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Um, I would like to move, um, to, uh, so that we accept and recommend the active transportation plan.
Okay. Uh, do I have a second?
Second.
Ma'am Secretary, please call roll.
Ali.
Yes.
Toth.
Yes.
Schuman.
Yes.
Abens.
Yes.
Smolik.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Is there anything else brought before planning commission this evening? Hearing none, planning commission adjourned. Good night, everybody. This thing, you could have a copy. Ali. All right, let me borrow your pen. I have to sign my life away.
City property.
You know how many I stole? Have you ever stolen C property? Yes. They're there. Uh, no, no, but, uh, it's, right here. I didn't know there was tennis courts, to be honest with you, until I saw it on the aerial. Anywhere? Good night. Oh, the, the bar. I thought we were going to be a lot later than this. I did not sign. I failed. How's it going? Uh, I'm hoping to. I, I'm, I need, I need money. Uh, he, he wants me to get money from the state, so I have to submit in March. I have no idea what's going on, because at one point, I thought you guys were all going to go to Meadowwood. It was going to be a local dispatch. Then North Olmsted did their. Yeah.